Set your appointments, can we help guide your care? That's our mentality. We work for you. You are the customer. It's a little bit different from the current healthcare system. Second bubble, everyone has a registered dietitian and coach. Let's say you're working on training for a 5K with your coach and you're managing your stress. And your stress is usually a five out of 10 and all of a sudden bumps up to an eight out of a 10. Your coach, who you know and knows you, they will be from the community here, local. They're not from a call center somewhere. They will be somebody of your community. Will reach out and say, hey, I see you're struggling with your stress a little bit. Can I help you? Can I support? Hopefully, we can help in the lifestyle realm, but maybe you need to get your clinical team involved. If that's the case, we'll say, no problem. Virtual care or in-person, whatever's more convenient with for you, we're going to get you with your primary care physician right away. When that person leaves that primary care physician's office, they will come to you all and say, I don't know what you did, but thank you for giving us People One Health. I have never had that much time and been listened to and cared for by my care team like that before. And I do want to note, this is not physicians' challenges in the current healthcare system. It is not their fault. It is the system they are working in. They are all wonderful folks. We are just putting them in a system where they can have unlimited time to care for your folks. Fourth bubble, again, we talk about the specialists. Instead of sending you around to all the specialists, we use that curbside consults. Fifth bucket, that all comes together. The rightmost bucket is the most important. For the first time ever, your primary care physician, your specialist, your coach, your care guide, everyone is working together to maximize your health and well-being and minimize your cost. Okay. You don't have to take my word for it. My biggest sales pitch ever is don't believe a word that I'm saying here. Let's look at the data. I'm an epidemiologist by education. Sorry for the nerd- nerding is here, but let's take you through that. Yeah, it is funny. You can laugh about that. Okay. So this is actually a public school district that we've been working with for many years. You might have seen this data already, but quickly, nobody's forced into this model. This is about choice. Some of your folks say, I want to do this. This is awesome. And some folks are going to say, I want to watch and wait a little bit, or maybe I'm happy where I am. Those are all valid answers. What that'll allow us to do is a comparison, show you the total cost of care for the folks who are kind of running around in the traditional system versus the folks who are accessing People One Health. And we will show you every quarter and every year, the data on that. What you see here, on the blue bar, is the folks that we have the honor to care for. On the red bar, the folks who kind of run around in the traditional system. What you see is the math playing out. When you remove fee-for-service, that volume-based incentive in healthcare, PPO networks, and administration from the vast majority of care, and use those dollars to care for your people, you see the blue bar cutting costs by 10, 20, 30, 40, 50% reductions in healthcare costs. For the sake of time, I will fly through here for these last two. Rational folks like yourself might say, hey, Jordan, do your numbers look great because you get all the healthy folks who don't need healthcare anyway? That's why they join. And then you get lucky with all your numbers. It's the exact opposite. I'll tell you the anecdote and then I'll show you the data. But think about hypothetical Joe with type 2 diabetes. If he's properly managing his type 2 diabetes, he's seeing his physician four times a year to manage his A1C, his blood sugars. He's getting his eyes checked, his feet checked for retinopathy and neuropathy, and he's getting his medication. The data shows that Joe is rationing his healthcare to avoid copays deductibles and coinsurance. He's going to the doctor twice a year, splitting his medication in half so he can buy us on a baseball bat, and skipping his retinopathy checks. That's real. Then you all folks say, hey, Joe, we're going to give you the option of joining People One Health. If you do, all that care costs you nothing. Because of that, the Joes of the world flock to our healthcare offering, and the data here shows you this. So one of our clients, actually, this was a county in Pennsylvania, hired a third-party actuary to validate. What you see on the gray bar there was the folks who stuck with the regular healthcare offering. On the right were the folks who we got the chance to care for. Those top-right numbers show you that the folks who chose to join us had worse prospective and concurrent risk. That is a nerd's way of saying those folks were older, sicker, more chronic disease, and wanted more medications. The actuary said, your cost for your folks should be $6,005 per member per year. The folks who were younger and healthier should cost a plan $4,272. Look towards the bottom of the page, you will see the actual outcomes at the end of the year. Not only do we beat the actuary by 30%, we beat the younger, healthier population. We will get the folks in your plan that need our services the most, and that's fantastic because that's how we will change the economics of the plan, but most importantly, the humanity of the people we care for. My last slide, and thank you so much for the time. We have 15,000-plus folks we're caring for across nine locations. The green number is what I'm most proud of. Our net promoter score, which is really a customer service satisfaction, is 85. The average net promoter score in the healthcare system is a 35, and a primary care physician's office that's owned by the big system is a 3. The fact that your folks will heard and listened to and cared for and advocated for, that's what we're most proud of and excited to bring to your folks. And thank you for the time. I will stop rambling. I appreciate it and happy to take any questions I can for everybody.
Well, I'm sure we're going to have a slew, but I'll let everybody else start. So who would like to start with the questions? You don't want me to start, huh? Okay. Go ahead.
So 1.8 is your initial investment, is our- would be our initial investment as a county. Part of that, you-
936.
Right, 936 is what the other option, right? Those are two options on that slide?
Well, actually, that's what they need to open it total, but they're wanting Putnam County to commit to the 936, and that would look- they'd look elsewhere for the other 864 by hunting 480 additional members outside of the county.
That is correct. So yeah, I'll try to go through slowly through this because it could be confusing. So we need from our partners to say, hey, we will say, there will be a minimum of 1,000 members in there by the time you open. Let's just use March as that timeframe. It is our goal to not charge you all one more dollar than the folks who are actually members of. So we are going to spend the next six months, and me personally, I am here for a reason because I'm going to be spending time here with the community, to get as many other employers and school district involved. So when we open the door on March, in March 1st, that you all folks only pay for the folks who actually join. But for us to say today, you know, like we say, we're going to come, we're going to start building out this space, we're going to invest our dollars and cents, that's the kind of total, the total requirement we're looking for is to know that we'll have at least 1,000 members when we open the doors in March. Does that help?
A little bit. So have you had conversations with the school board? Are you allowed to share that?
I don't know if I'm allowed to share that.
Okay. What about local providers? I mean, obviously, I do not want to do anything, you know, we're local first. We should be local first. So how is it you're going to incorporate in local providers or work with local providers?
Across our nine current locations, 100% of them are staffed by local healthcare providers. And what happens from a pattern standpoint is those folks are working in the more traditional healthcare system, and unfortunately, primary care physicians in that system have to see 25 to 40 patients a day to keep up with the fee-for-service. In essence, we give them the option to come join People One where they see no more than 16 patients a day. They get paid as good or better. And those folks will make the choice to come over to People One Health, but our intent is to hire all those folks from the community.
And you are, you've done the demographics on that, and you understand how many providers we have in Putnam County?
We do.
Okay. This was probably a staff question. How would we handle workers' comp? Can we use them for workers' comp, or do we have to, I mean, would that be a savings and additional savings to us if we were able to use them for workers' comp claims?
That would be an additional conversation and savings, so not part of the captured cost savings that you're seeing in containment measures at this time. We would explore that dynamic in the future.
Okay. What about the specialty prescriptions? So obviously, that's a huge expense for the- for especially a self-insured agency like ours. We see, you know, a very small amount of people getting those specialty drugs, but they're a large portion of our funding cost. So how you're able to get those at a reduced rate, or it would still cost zero to the member?
Excellent question. So in our model, all of the generic drugs are included, no additional cost to yourself as the plan, your folks as the plan, or to your members. From a black and white perspective, the specialty and brand drugs will still run through the traditional system that you have, your PBM. So nothing will change. What is different, though, is that you will have a clinical pharmacist on your team working with your primary care physician. What they will be doing is saying, is this the best medication for you? Are there manufacturing coupons out there? Are there clinical trials? Are there other ways in which we can ensure that we get the best value and the best care for your folks? So we are going to be working as hard as we can to get your folks the best value, but at the end of the day, it's between the physician and the patient to make sure that they get the best medicine. And if that is a brand-name drug that's on your existing formulary, we don't disrupt that. So we'll work very hard, but it's a doctor and the patient relationship at the end of the day.
Okay. Those were my listed questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. In your model, you say your doctors spend 30 minutes with a patient every day. On 1,000 people, though, is that really practical?
Great. It's a great question about the math behind all of this. So each one of our offices is staffed with a primary care physician, licensed clinical social worker, registered dietitian, and then a clinical pharmacist. So if you think, sir, about an individual with type 2 diabetes, let's say they are doing okay on their insulin. Not only is the physician caring for them, but they may just spend an appointment with the clinical pharmacist saying, hey, is everything going okay with your medication? They may spend another session with the registered dietitian working on their diet. So when you have this enhanced care team, it allows every provider to work to the top of their license. If you just look at the math, though, one primary care physician doing 30-minute appointments can actually handle about 1,500 members with that same cadence. So we've run this for 10 years. We have the math behind that to ensure there's access and the right kind of care for your folks.
See, I think our goal when we started out was to have someplace where the employee could walk in, see the doctor pretty quick, walk out with prescriptions, get back to work or not, go home, but have that experience where they're in and out. It's a good experience, and they want to continue using that. So I'm a little concerned, and it's just me probably, that if we open it up to everybody, and now we have 3,000 people, then I'm in the waiting room an hour, and I'm not having a good experience, and that concerns me.
Very important point. So let me talk to you about how this will grow, and we will continue our investment in the community. So each office we open is capped out at 3,000 members. That will be a primary care physician plus another provider, a nurse practitioner, a physician's assistant, and those ancillary care teams. If we have any more members, and usually when we get to about 2,500, we slow down, we will open up another office down the street, across town. We will never have more than 3,000 members in an office. We'll bring in another physician, and we will keep growing this model because it has to be that time, that care, that relationship. We can't reproduce that turn and burn of the current system. So I appreciate your point, and we will grow like that with you.
And let me follow up, one last thing. When you said labs were done onsite, right? But when you're building out your facility, what are you building out? Are you building out MRI? You building out radiology? Or what are you building out here?
Great question. So we will build a primary care physician's office. So primary care physician's office will be equipped to do all the lab draws there. We'll do some quick tests, like if you need a quick strep test or whatnot. We do all those onsite right at our primary care physician's office. But then we contract with local providers for things like imaging and physical therapy. So we don't build that out. We partner with local healthcare providers to deliver those services when we don't provide them in our offices. So that's why, you know, I'll just bring you the circle, sorry. This service here, we will provide the blue, the primary care, and the green, all that care team, sorry for the formatting, but everything in that orange, we will contract with existing partners in the community to deliver all of that.
And one final thing. You said that you weren't urgent care, but I think that's where we're seeing some of our costs at. Naturally, the 19 people, but the people that have to go, Julianne Miss Young gave an example not too long ago of needing to go to the doctor and just go to the emergency room.
Yes.
We're trying to avoid that. That's what we're really trying to avoid to get those costs down.
100%. So the reason why, clarification, is we're not just urgent care because urgent care's already been there. Folks go there because they don't have a primary care physician or a relationship where they can't get into the office. What I should say more specifically is we displace urgent care in ER because I'm a member of People One Health. I can call Dr. Burke right now and get him on the phone and say, Dr. Burke, look what I did to my arm. Do I need to go to the ER? And he'll say yes, or he'll say, no, come on in. I can stitch that up. It's not a big deal. So it is the access with your primary care physician that will lower ER utilization by 75 to 80% because you'll come to us, will lower ER utilization by 25-plus percent. So I'm just clarifying that we're not just urgent care. We're a whole lot more, but we also take care of those same-day urgent care needs as well, if that helps. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mel?
Yeah.
That was actually one of the questions that I was going to ask was, the math doesn't work. Thousand patients, thousand hours, 26 weeks, but now you explain that, and that's good enough. So if we could vary away from the actual, how the clinic will work for a minute and get to the business side of the deal.
Sure.
On page three that you had in there a minute ago, you actually were showing that you needed 1,000 members to operate, but you wanted the county to guarantee 520 members under this scenario. I know there's others, but under this scenario, and then you, who would go look for the other 480 members? We obviously don't have a member of staff that can go out and look for these people. So would it be somebody in your organization that, working with maybe Mr. Bates, that you would go out and look for these other people through maybe that program that Benji was saying to me at the last meeting where small employers that didn't have healthcare could join the clinic for small healthcare, whatever, and take for their 150 a month? They could take $25 a week out of their employee's paycheck, and put $50 a week in it or whatever, and they would then have at least a healthcare to some level where they're not having any now at all. So would y'all go after that? Is that what you would do, or?
Absolutely. So thank you, sir, for the question. So a couple clarification points. You folks have already dedicated and supported with 520 members. We're obviously looking to figure out the gap between the two, but by no means is that your job. That is my job. That's why I'm here, to stand here today as CEO of this company. You could imagine I'm running all over the country, but I am not doing that anymore. The next six months of my time is working with the gentleman you mentioned and the community to get as many folks into our model as possible, whether it be businesses or those individuals who just have no access to care right now. So that is my job, and I am personally here to stand for you to say that I will take personal responsibility for that.
So I guess I missed a little bit. We're act- we have actually committed to the 40% I understand so far. And so with, what happens if come March, you don't have your other belly buttons, or whatever y'all call it, your other members or whatever? What would happen then?
It's a fair question. So in a hypothetical situation, if you all said, we want to get going and we will take the risk of 1,000 members, if we don't have 1,000 members, from the letter of the contract is that we will be billing you that first month for 1,000 members even if you only have 520. So full transparency, that is the risk that you will all take. So that is the black and white answer.
So basically, before you get started, you're going to have a commitment, or at least a very good comfortable feeling you're going to have a commitment for your 1,000 members?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we got you started by committing to the 40% or 520 members, so you've still got to be able to go out and find those other 480 members before you can actually start the process. So the schedule that you show on page four is not really valid because you don't have those other 1,000 yet, and so it would basically be from now until March, or from wherever you started until that point in time.
That is correct, sir.
Does anybody else in the member of the committee or have anything they'd like to add at this point?
My biggest concern when I looked at this PowerPoint presentation was, and I guess because I have several elements myself, is the specialist's care, it just seems a little odd to me, and maybe it's because I see three or four different specialists, but I honestly don't know that I want my primary care being the interactor with my specialist. And I don't know that everyone would, so I think that may be a roadblock for us in convincing some of our employees to participate. You know, it's scary to me to overcommit that we're going to have 520 people and then people don't participate. That, to me, is a showstopper. Like, if I was in the, and I've tried to stay away from commenting in this particular committee because I don't participate in the insurance, right? I have different insurance. But looking at it from outside, that's where I think the biggest hole in it is.
It's a very important question, and let me kind of bring up a visual here. So just a point of clarification, I'll go to the circle since it's formatted properly. So within the People One Health membership is everything you see in the blue circle here. In terms of the stuff that happens outside of our office, it's things like getting an MRI or getting a durable medical equipment like a CPAP if you have sleep apnea or whatnot. But your folks will still have their insurance card, so they are still able to go to any specialist that they would like. What we do for folks who need it or who would like it is, if your primary care physician does some blood work and sees that your blood sugar's elevated, instead of immediately sending you out to an endocrinologist where it might take six weeks to get in, that's the reality of the current healthcare system, they will actually call the endocrinologist that we have and say, hey, let's look at what's going on with this individual. Can I help manage here, or should we get them to the endocrinologist ASAP? But if you, sir, or anybody else has an endocrinologist they love and they want to stick with, all you do is say, I still want to go to my endocrinologist, but you, primary care physician, can you help coordinate or send records or whatnot? So you are still free to use all of your specialists. We're just here to support that, or for folks who don't have those resources.
So I get that. That sounds pretty good. My question is, though, is you're trying to participate in the 88% of the cost, right, is what you're quoting, and that right away, I don't see how, and that, obviously, I've never looked at your model in depth, but you take those specialists, you take those drugs that we're talking about, and we already know from the data that we have that that's over 12% of our cost.
You said 88% of the claims, not the cost.
That's right. Let me-
Of the claims, okay.
So it's 88% of the claims, 40% of the costs are the math that we disintermediate. Sorry for that confusion point.
Okay. I can get there.
Another question. You mentioned that you would be able, you would help keep people out of the ER or urgent care. So you're open 24/7? I mean, because obviously, that's when people go to the urgent care or the ER is when they can't get in with their primary physician.
It's a bit of a Back to the Future. So our care teams, so the care teams for your folks who choose to join are on-call 24 hours.
Okay.
So if you, it's 2:00 in the morning and your daughter's got an earache, you call and you talk to your physician who knows your daughter and really knows what's going on. So yes, you have 24-hour care with our folks.
Well, I had a granddaughter that had a peanut stuck up her nose, and even though that doesn't sound like a big deal-
It can be.
It can be. But she still had to go to the ER. She could have, we could have called telehealth unless they were some special tool. We couldn't have, we couldn't, we couldn't take it out of the house, obviously. So I don't, in a case like that, she would, you would say, you still need to go to the ER.
Absolutely. So our job is to get you to the care that you need right away. If it's the ER, you're going to go there and we'll help you get there. But if not, if that happens at 2:00 in the morning, you call us, you're going to get your care team who knows you, and that's who you'll talk to.
Okay.
Thank you for the question.
Ms. Chairman, along those lines, so you would be, like she's talking, you would, would it be like a teledoc, or are you actually going to be able to go see somebody 24/7?
So for the urgent care, for those situations where you, it is off-hours, 2:00 in the morning, when you call us, it's going to be virtual care. You can do it on, you know, virtual or just a good old-fashioned phone call. If you need to go somewhere at 2:00 in the morning, we will direct you to an urgent care or the ER. Our physicians in-person are available during, you know, normal business hours, and we'll set those hours based on your work schedules and whatnot. But those truly off-hours, it's virtual care, and then we will guide you to an actual place of service if you need to go to an urgent care facility.
What would the hours of walk-in operation be?
It's, you know, every one of our clients, some of our clients are coal miners or steel workers, and they work shifts, and we do 6:00 in the morning sometimes, and we open to 7:00 o'clock at night. We'll really look at your personnel and the shifts they work, and we'll make a customized schedule that is catered to your folks.
Okay. Looking at one of the slides, it's $150 per member per month. Okay, guaranteed that you're at that 1,000. At what point and how do you, because things always go up, how do you raise the price? And how do you figure that? If we were staying at the amount that you have to have, where do you, I mean, it's got to go up. What kind of increments? Do you have any idea how it would go up?
So besides being an epidemiologist, I also have a finance degree. So I'm going to get really nerdy on you for a second here, but bear with me, okay? The current healthcare system, you can never gain unit economics, meaning in unit economic scale, the more folks or the more that participate, the unit cost actually goes down. You can't get that in healthcare because it's all fee-for-service claims, meaning the more you go, the more you pay. When you shift to a fixed-cost model, the more folks that participate in that model, the lower the unit cost gets. So I'm not here to guarantee anything, but I will tell you factually what happened in our first markets where we started. We started with 1,000 members, and then eventually, we have over 4,000 members in multiple offices. We were able to go to our partners who provide physical therapy and imaging and whatnot and say, we're paying you now for 4,000 folks and all this money. We were actually able to lower the price in that region three times because the more folks that come in in a fixed-cost infrastructure, the lower the unit cost gets. That's the math of what actually happened. I can't guarantee that, but I will guarantee your price will not change for three years, and I will do everything I can to bring in as many members as we can so we can realize those unit economics for your folks and get those price efficiencies into the market.
Did you say, and I may have missed it, that this would be capped at 3,000?
Each office will be capped at 3,000 members. If we fill the one up down the street here, we on our dime with no other guarantees, this is only a one-time thing, we will open up another office on our dime and bring in another full care team to that subsequent office.
So that would, that would be part of a total? That could reduce the, is that what-
Correct.
-following?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, can you explain staffing again, how you would staff?
Sure thing. So each office will have a primary care physician who will be the leader of the care team. We bring in a physician's assistant or a nurse practitioner to augment that team. There'll be a registered dietitian, a licensed clinical social worker, a clinical pharmacist, and three medical assistants. That's the staff for the full office.
Okay. When you say bring in, would you be hiring within the community?
100% of the folks I just listed will be full-time employees of People One Health, and we will hire them from the community.
Okay, so they could be coming from a primary care facility that we already have here?
It's a potential. That is potential.
Okay. All right. That's all I have right now.
Anybody have any other questions at this point? Okay, hopefully, you'll stick around a few minutes because I've got a feeling you might get some more.
Happy to.
Chairman Clay, where would you like this to go from here? Are you just going to leave? Would you like to have anything to say?
Great presentation. Thank you for that. Wonderful questions as well. I think this is what we've been discussing, I haven't heard anything that's been shocking to me. Hopefully, the committee's still committed and moving in this direction, that we will be able to stand this, this clinic up. Now we have more of a definitive timeline, that's one of the things we discussed, and what does this look like as far as a timeline is concerned? So for me, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, so Julianne, at this point, would you kind of go over where we are and what, we had had some brief conversations at the last insurance committee meeting, did we want to kickstart this a little harder, did we want to do something else? Can you help me as far as laying out exactly where we are now and, and what the next step would be if we wanted to speed up the, the tentative line?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. As we've talked in the insurance committee, our rising claims cost in our health insurance plan is largely a metric of our under-insured or unengaged members of the plan. Essentially, we have a smaller population of insured members who are not seeking routine medical care and then incurring a high-cost claim. That is something that we've been discussing for years in our insurance committee. This solution brought to us through, through multiple sources, but, but we toured it, the administrative team toured an actual facility in Osceola, and spoke to them about their yield, about their return on what they put in, and they were largely in the same place we are. What we initially talked about was essentially a no-risk scenario, which was, we would commit 40% of a guarantee to allow them to truly make way into the market, and then to attract the remaining participants on their timeline to, to open the clinic at a time certain in the future. We've done that, and there's no risk, obviously, or very little risk to our group with that metric. In the meantime, as we've talked about in the insurance committee, rising costs are not being contained until we engage something like this and/or this, and as well as additional metrics. And so one of the things the insurance committee directed staff to do was, we picked that 40% blindly, and so what we did then was go back and issue a voluntary, very easy survey for our populations to answer, and what we got back was much higher than the 40% engagement, just based on that survey. Now, it was a surface-level survey to gauge interest, but it was the first attempt at gauging interest that we had done of our true populations. Each of the constitutionals participated in it, and then the board employees did as well. And so the question came back to the insurance committee is, should we actually up our perspective or projected percentage or guarantee in order to expedite this timeline? There's a few metrics that we've laid out in speaking with People One. We could up our guarantee, which closes the delta in what they need in community-based partners to go live. We could, on day one, i.e. today, say, look, we're gonna hit the 1,000 members, and we would only be responsible for paying it on a monthly basis, and then we could offset that by actual numbers at any point in the time where we have those community partners come and engage. So if we said on day one, we're gonna do the 1,000, and we actually end up with 750 utilizing it, but 250 came out of the woodwork while they are building out their, their clinic, then day one, we're still only paying the 750 because the 250 came on board in the meantime of the organizational. That onboarding process could be a joint initiative between People One and the county. It could be simply a People One initiative, obviously the return there is, the more effort we're willing to put in, the more potential we have to bring in those other agencies. So we have the guarantee of the 40% that we've already provided to them. However, I believe that through the survey interest that we've seen, the appetite of our employees in speaking with them, and frankly, the rising costs that we can't contain, there is, it's warranted for the insurance committee to make a recommendation to either increase our guarantee or to launch the initiative holistically in the beginning.
Okay, so basically, if the, if it got to that point and the board decided to launch, to go ahead and launch, just that scenario, the board would actually have to come up with two or three months' payments towards the complete launch, which would be 150 a month, and then there wouldn't be any more expense to us until they actually launched, and then we would get the three months back in the first three months-
Correct.
-of when they, they've launched, so we wouldn't actually have to pay any more money until three months after they've launched, so-
Well, to make it more muddy than that, if we, and, and I, you know, that's, I want to make sure it's very clear, let's assume that the insurance committee and the board makes a recommendation to go ahead and, and fully guarantee it at 1,000 members. What we had previously discussed, and we can review details, is that there would be a three, upfront three-month payment. And then let's say on day one of opening the clinic, actual participation by the board and its constitutionals was 700, and there was, in that time period of, we say, launch and pay that initial payment and go live, there was community participation of those 300, you would actually get four months of no payment, because you'd only pay your 700 actual members that you're responsible for, because the 300 came on board. So I, I realize I just made that more muddy than, than what it was to begin with, but they've agreed to give us actual credit back on those members that we engaged that are not board, or Putnam County, I guess, for, for your constitutional offices, are not, are not ours.
Yes, Commissioner Haraway.
Julianne, our goal is to incentivize or encourage our employees to take better healthcare, better charge of their healthcare.
Yes, sir.
What if an employee says to us, and say it's the 500 or whatever it is, but we have a group of employees who say, I'm fine with my doctor, give me a sheet of paper, I'll have my doctor fill it out, bring it back, you can see that I'm not the one driving up the cost, do I get $1,800 a year for doing that?
Well, nobody's getting-
And I'm, I'm just playing, because that happened, I had that question the other day.
Okay, well, we're, we can devil's advocate a lot, but at this point, the insurance committee has not recommended either a surcharge or a discount on participation. This is an optional, we are, we are trying to impact-
Right.
-insurance funds, claims, expenses.
And I guess-
And what we know is, they're being driven by people not utilizing healthcare appropriately.
And I guess what kind of stuck in my mind in thinking about this, was something that Chairman Davis said at our last meeting, if we could just get the 19 people that are driving the healthcare cost up, if we could just handle that, that would be a big savings to this organization right there. So we talk about 1,000, but really we're talking a handful.
But you aren't, we're talking about 1,000, because what you're seeing in that 19 people is, or, or, and I, it's probably, that was 19 per month, right, in that one month, so maybe it's a rolling average of X percent of your population. What you're seeing is, frankly, in our market, there is a lack of accessibility to healthcare. There aren't enough primary providers who care for our constituents who need the care, and so then they don't go get it, and they don't go get it until they have that heart attack, and then when they have that heart attack, they're one of our 19. We want to change that narrative. I, I want to be part of the group that's telling our employees that we get it. It's hard to get healthcare right now in Putnam County and in our surrounding areas. Instead of you having to take a day off and drive to Jacksonville to get that care, we're gonna bring it here for you, because your vitality, frankly, your wellness matters to us, and your, your, what we get in return is twofold.
I agree, I agree, thank you.
You know, and, and I think that there's something else that's got to be part of this conversation, is that I understand that we're touting the possible savings of the program and what have you, but if the program breaks even, doesn't save us a dime, it just breaks even, and it gives us tremendously better healthcare for our employees than what they have right now, and access to that healthcare, and access to doctors, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I can bring my own conversation into this. In, in my particular situation, I'm on Medicare Plus and Medicare, so I'm not really in the plan, but if, if I, if I, if the doctor that I go to was not a personal friend, I wouldn't have a doctor right now, a primary doctor, because they don't, they want Humana, and we don't do Humana here, we do the Medicare supplement, Blue Cross. So I think he's got like three people left in his whole organization that's, that's not Humana, they want Humana. They've probably fired everybody else that's not Humana that used to be their clients and the whole organization, so it's difficult to find a doctor. I was told by somebody sitting in this room, that I'm not gonna call the name, but they can't find a doctor. If they get sick, they either got to deal with it themselves at the Walgreens, or CVS, or they got to go to the emergency room, or go to Dr. Millenick's clinic, one or the other, I mean, that's just, that's their option. So if they have to work during the day and they can't get time off to get there before the clinic's closed, then it's the emergency room, there's no option. So, like I said, if this turns out to be a break-even ordeal, and, and every, if I understand, and please help me here, but I understand that every time they've tried this scenario, they've saved money, on every one of the times they've used it so far. If we don't save a dime and we just break even, I think we're ahead of the game, but that's not what it's shown to this date. So, to me, it's not how fast, it's not if we implement it, it's how fast we implement it. Are we willing to take the risk to pay the three months' payments and go ahead and pony up for the 1,000, and then work hard and get a commitment from People One, and, and, hopefully Benji doesn't have anything to throw at me, but get a commitment from Benji to, to help reach out to these, to the small businesses, because I really think that's a, that'll be a community, it'll help the community tremendously to get all these smaller businesses that don't have health insurance at all, and get them involved in this program. And it could be that even with a larger, a larger possible business partner, private business partner in the community that does offer healthcare, it may be a way that, that they could either approach and maybe get some money less on their premiums, or either for all the employees that they have worked for them that have healthcare, that don't have a doctor at all, they might want to participate in this program by spreading a little of the cost, and where their wife or their child or whatever could actually have a doctor to go to instead of just a clinic or the hospital. So there's other ways to look at this too, and I, I just feel like that we'll have some success, so I guess it all boils down to me is how fast do we want to jump-start this? To me, I think it needs to, we need to try it. Anybody that thinks that our healthcare in Putnam County is sustainable has got their head stuck in the sand. I don't believe that, I believe that if we keep moving in the direction we're going, we're gonna be in dire straits sometime in the future as far as cost of healthcare. So the only thing that I've seen so far is this program that may work. Worst-case scenario, how long we got to sign up for, do we sign up for to make it work? A year?
So the, thank you, sir, for, for all your comments, and I share in your passion, because at the end of the day, it's not about the 1,000 cents, it's about the people that we care for in your community. After this initial guarantee period, which will help us getting going, you only pay us for the folks who are members, so if we do not deliver on care or dollars and cents and whatnot, you just send out an email to all your folks and say, don't join People One Health, and we get paid nothing. So there's actually nothing contractually keeping you to have to pay us year after year after year. It is up to me and my organization to deliver that value so you choose to continue to engage with us.
So basically, we're committing to a, a year of guaranteeing the 1,000 people, or whichever part of them y'all can't come up with on the side, Benji, I'm gonna work you hard.
[laughing]
So, the, whatever y'all can't come up with in the, in the private sector around here, and if it doesn't work out, then we're really not out anything except the money that we put in for better healthcare.
That is correct.
I guess I'm having trouble finding the downside of this, y'all need to help me some.
Well, I have a couple of questions, so Rich, have you been presented with this contract? So how do we know everything he's saying is actually what's in the word in the contract? I mean, listen-
We don't have to sign it if it's not what we agree to.
So, but we're, at this point, we have not received a draft, we haven't received-
We got an initial draft of the, the, what we did engage, the, we signed an engagement letter after board action for the guarantee of the 40%, we got an initial draft, and it was actually the request to reverse it, so we want to draft the initial off of our template and let them insert all the medical jargon, but we did see the initial draft, and it was as stipulated from the original agreement that we've already signed the engagement on.
So, I have a couple of questions, and ones towards staff, I guess, what was the responses, how many responders did we get that responded positively to joining this from our, I'll call it-
Yes, sir, we had 378 total responses, which is a little over half of our employee responded, and of that, we had 726 indicate that them and their dependents would be a member engaged in service.
That's the total.
726.
Yeah.
So we're, we're-
That does cap, there's a, there's a, there's a cap limitation, so for a family of five, they're only gonna count for three, so essentially, even though maybe you have 100% of the young family joining and participating, it only counts for three in their calculation, so that number accounts for the, the limitations.
You only, you only, thank you, Julianne, you only pay for three, but everybody can come, so if an entire family of five wants to join, the, the plan only pays for three, the other two come for free, we only charge for the first three in a family, that's what, Julianne.
So you offer pediatric care?
We do.
Down to what age?
Two.
So, that's kind of interesting, so basically, our, we're talking about extending this beyond just our employees to families, and what, what's the upper end of it for a college student, or what's the, the upside of the family?
Yeah, so it's not like the traditional healthcare world, it's, anyone can join, and so let's say there's a family of five, and dad wants to join, mom doesn't, the two kids do, and one, one, one child you want to keep-
Let me be more specific.
Yes, sir.
Let's say it's myself, my wife, I have four young children, I have a daughter who's 21.
So, Commissioner, let me help though, because they're gonna be community-based, so you could walk in off the street potentially at some point in the future. Our stipulation is you have to be covered by county health insurance in order to be eligible, so-
I got you.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yes, sir.
So, sometimes Chairman and I agree on things, and one other thing I just wanted to add to what you said, is the hospital also doesn't want people in the emergency room, right? So that's, that's not our angle that we, we don't see in this, right? The hospital doesn't want people in the emergency room that don't belong in the emergency room, the urgent cares don't want people in the urgent care that are there with a sniffle, right? They don't want someone that comes in at 2:00 in the morning because they have a cold, when they could've called and they could've sent a prescription over that's ready in the morning, which is what you're gonna get from the hospital urgent care anyway. So I think this potentially, beyond what you're saying, Chairman, it, it also alleviates some of the pressure to people that aren't participating, and I don't tend to get there as government, but in this case, I think it's, and I, I said this when we talked about it generically as our board, not as this board, and in this case, it's something that we absolutely need to do something to offset the cost. So the total, our total put-in that we have to guarantee is basically 1.5 million if we went 1,000 people, is that what I'm hearing?
1.8 million.
1.8 million?
But, but the guarantee, obviously, is the three months upfront.
The thing, the thing I liked about, you know, you're, it's human nature, you're more incentivized as a company to go find that other 400-some people, if we, or whatever it is, if we only sign up for so many, where if we just say, hey, we're doing 1,000, then we kind of do have to work Benji, like, like Chairman said. And it's just human nature, human nature is, your company all of a sudden's gonna be, well, our focus now is standing up the clinic and getting all that done, because we have the commitment, and now you seem like a good enough guy, maybe that isn't what would happen, but I, I've worked in the corporate world for my entire adult life, and that's what happens. So I like it, I like the idea. Again, like I've said, I've tried not to participate, because I don't participate in the insurance, but as an outsider looking at it, it, it sounds better than I thought before this day started, let's put it that way.
Well, I know when it came to the board a while back, and we discussed it, and we, and we decided that we'd put up either a month or two or three of the money for the, to start at the lower level, that's probably the, the one that I was for at the time, and the main reason being was that I'm not wanting to take any more risks than anybody else does, I don't. But realizing what I've learned, being a little more involved in Chairman Davis's insurance committee, I think we're gonna have to step up here at some point and think a little outside the box, because I, I am convinced that what we're doing now isn't gonna work, that it's not gonna work much longer. And so, even if we ended up stepping into this, and we break even on the deal to where we have enough savings to offset the costs, just break even, we've done something by raising the healthcare to our people. If we make money, then we're gonna dance around the maypole, because that would be wonderful that we actually did something that helped the, the people with better health insurance, and we saved the citizens' tax money. This year, we just ponied up a million dollars on the true-up to make our health insurance work, a million dollars. A million dollars. We're hoping that next year we won't have to during the true-up. I don't have any level of belief that we're not going to have to pony up a million dollars next year, if not more. Because like you brought up earlier, Commissioner Harvey, there's 19 people here that are driving more than a third of the cost in the whole system. So all we can hope for is that maybe our providers can get with those providers and, and that maybe for one of those shots that cost $25,000 a month, that we can do it cheaper inside the clinic or whatever and we can incentivize the people to do it easier or cheaper. And I don't know, but I know that what we're doing now is not working. And if we don't do something, I don't know what it is. Ask me how to put on a roof or Della Shingle, I can tell you how to do that. I don't know how to fix this without bringing in professionals. These are the guys, are the professionals, they got three programs. I don't think it's a matter of anything other than we want to pony up 450,000 minus the 70s. How much have we already paid?
Well, thankfully, they haven't asked us for a check, but we've committed. Um, we've, we've committed.
So in other words, there's no credit. Four, we got to come up with $450,000 to move this forward and try to get the timeline started in the manner that was presented to us today. I think we're going to spend that or more in the true-up next year, if not before. I'm not even sure that the million dollars that we put in this year is going to make it to the end of the year yet. We don't know yet until the end of the year, do we, Julianne?
We will not know, um, I mean, I, I'm projected that we're going to be whole this year, but, um, we, we won't know until we get some additional claims months and, and we just got our last month and it exceeded the annual average, although it wasn't a horrible month to begin with. So it wasn't, we didn't blow it, but it didn't, um, it didn't put us trending downward if, if that's a fair statement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
I have a question. Are you done?
Yeah.
I forgot your name, so I apologize.
Jordan, don't worry about it.
All right. Back about, I don't know, seven years ago, I think it was, um, we went through this exercise of being self-insured through, or traditional, and we had Dr. Adalberg from down in the south end of the state come up, and he's the one who set up the Alachua County Clinic. And what he told me basically, and I, I'm, I'm going to ask you a question here about this. He said that they didn't really see a savings for the first few years because they found people that were sick, that needed help, that were used, that weren't using the system, that should have been using the system. And once they got them in, then they were able to manage their healthcare. Have y'all seen that through, through your organization?
It's a phenomenal question, and you're asking an epidemiologist, so I apologize for where we're going here, but the, the question you asked is a crucial mathematic question of all of this. And I'll, I'll go back to this slide here. There is a lot of other organizations that do direct primary care, which is the, the business we're in, meaning you contract directly with primary care providers. The problem with that model by itself as a standalone is there's only about 3% to 5% of your health plan spend in just primary care. So it's very hard to drive a positive return early on. Now, it still may be the better model because then two, three, four years down the road, those folks are better cared for and their disease is managed and whatnot. What we were able to do is take primary care, but then add in those other services, the labs and the imaging and, um, physical therapy and whatnot. When you fix the cost of all of that healthcare, that's why when you see this, this chart here, we, we will deliver an ROI from year one. So we will get those sicker folks who need more care, but because we've, we've said we're going to fix the cost for all the stuff that they're likely going to use, that's why we see a positive ROI out of the gate from year one. So that's what's different about our economics, if that makes sense. It, oh, so, yes, sir.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
So let me ask it this way. So, so what you're saying basically is because you cover those, those, I'll call them five, I mean, obviously you're not specialists, but the five different metrics, right? You got a little bit of therapy, you got the social worker, you have the pharmacist. So basically, what you're saying is because they're going to be getting it all at one place, we're not going to be paying the outward costs of those five interactions, they're going to be all encompassed in that $150 a month as long as they stay in-house in your building. So I, I think that's great. I, I hate charts because charts can tell whatever story you choose to tell. The one thing I have to ask about this chart and if, I wrote down a note right here when I saw this chart, is the, the one thing that this chart doesn't have is how many people were in P1H in 17, 18, 18, 19, in 19, 20. And that could say a lot about those numbers and the same thing with the red.
Very important point. Thank you for paying attention to the fine detail. These costs here are per member per year versus per member per year. So it's not, it's, I'm making up numbers. It's not like we have 20 and they have 700, we just added up all the costs. It is a one-to-one comparison of total cost for folks we care for versus total cost for the folks who just kind of run around the existing system, if that makes sense.
So you're finding once someone's engaged in the system, if they stay, so that's one of the key metrics, is they have to stay, which hopefully they do, that that drives down because maybe they started to lose some weight or they got on the right medication because they weren't taking any medication, things like that. Okay. Thank you. I'm, thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Great question. If, if I could just offer one thing that might help all of this sacrifice, to your point, sir, about skin in the game and how are we doing this together, I, I would like to propose, and Julianne will reflect this in the contract, that your upfront investment is, is only one month. And that's my way of dedicating to all that, uh, we will both be working our butts off to make sure that we engage with the rest of the community and drive as many members as possible and not just sitting fat and happy on $450,000 and just saying, "Hey, we're good." So I'd like to make that additional kind of skin in the game and sacrifice to help accelerate and join you in, in your commitment.
Well, that's tremendous. So basically, we went from 72 to 150 to jumpstart this program and get the schedule moving. Wow, thank you.
No questions.
Thank you.
[laughing].
It worked. Or at least for me, it did.
That's, that's quite an offer.
So, so for clarity purposes, this committee would be making a recommendation to the board?
No, this is a joint meeting and, and it can be done right now if y'all wish to do it.
Well, I would like to see if there's any public comment. I know that we have that on that list, but-
Absolutely. I'm going to get there. No, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for public comment and I'm also going to ask if there's anybody else on the committee because this is a, a joint board meeting with the insurance committee, but it is a board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question and I'll wrap this up. I'm going to use myself for example, that I have asthma. So I breathe in this disc every morning and, and, um, but locally, my medicine is a couple hundred dollars for that supply. It's almost up to 260 if I'm not mistaken. My local doctor told me to go to Canada and get that. Will I still be going to Canada to get my medicine?
So without knowing the fine details, and I won't ask you to, uh, to say that in public-
But I mean, you probably have customers that, I'm sure you have clients that if you do this, you, I didn't know it was available.
The reality is, is you don't have to go to Canada. If you disintermediate the current system, the large pharmacy benefit managers and the large players in healthcare and get them out of the way and contract directly with the folks who sell the medications, which is what we do, you don't have to go to Canada. We'll get you that medication here locally in the United States for the right price that you should be paying.
But I wouldn't want it to cost the group more money, is what I'm trying to say. So for example, if it's $30 for a, a disc in Canada and it's going to cost you 40, I wouldn't mind paying the, you know, the difference of it, is what I'm trying to say. I just don't want it to cost our group any more money.
That is the strategy, and when you have an aligned healthcare partner who doesn't make more money, the more money we charge you, I don't, that's not how we work, that's how the system works. You're going to sit as the patient, the human being, with our clinical pharmacist and your physician, and you all together will make the decision that is right for you, and obviously you're altruistic for the plan too. So that's where the decision lies, not with a health insurance company, with yourself and your physician and your pharmacist.
So, I'm Fred off the street. I walk in, I want to sign up, I could pay $150 a month, right? And I don't have any other health insurance. So you obviously can't cover, you know, getting hit by a car in emergency room, but, so you're saying in, in that instance, this is actually an option for, for someone that's really in a bad spot possibly, who, that's all they might be able to afford is $150 a month and they don't have, or they, they work for themselves, they have a small business, and that allows them at least to get that care of, instead of just, like you're saying, going to Eckerd- well, Eckerd Drugs isn't existing.
You're telling your age.
That was the drugstore in my hometown. Um, just going to the drugstore and, and, and buying a bunch of off, over-the-counter stuff, they could actually get the targeted medicine they wanted. So, so I mean, we could really publicize this to anyone in the community in a way and, all right, I, I, I think we could definitely do a social media campaign of some sort as well, once we are committed to this, and I think that could help. Okay.
Personally, I've talked with three different business owners, small business owners, that do not furnish health insurance at the present time, that their bottom line won't let them. And all three of them were very interested in this, especially if they would pay part, then the employer pay a little bit and give them a member service and healthcare that they don't have now. No healthcare.
Yeah, because it's, it's either the bigger employer who can save on their overall costs, who already has health insurance, or it's someone that has nothing. There really isn't, you're not playing in that middle tier of 40 employees who have health insurance. Probably doesn't make sense for that company to participate with an extra $150 per person, but the person that has six that have nothing makes a lot of sense and the company that has 1,000 or 800, it makes sense. There, there is some scalability.
Your, your points are really advanced and I, I commend you all for figuring this out. Just don't steal my business, please. Um, so, so it's actually all, all of the above. So you folks as the county and school districts are larger, you have more buying power in dollars. So you all are the, are the early adopters. Everywhere we go, that's the case. But then you, let's go down to the individual who's an independent contractor and can't afford to go buy for themselves, and they can't afford an entire, but they come in and say, "Hey, for 150 bucks a month, I can get almost everything and get my generic drugs and get all this stuff." But the most, I'll say the second most pain is in the small employer right now because they don't have the same options you all have. The, the 20, 30, 40% increases that are happening in the small business market is, is where the decision's becoming now that we're going to have to get rid of health insurance and not offer it at all, or look to find a, a plan to augment this. So we actually work throughout that entire spectrum. It's, it's going to be a community-based dynamic and a community-based effort here. It's going to really help nearly everybody.
One last question. This really has nothing to do with our particular people, but that guy that walks in off the street or has four employees and the medicine he needs isn't covered under generic, do you still offer tiered pricing or how do you, do you still negotiate the best price and pass that on to them? I'm assuming, I'm, I want you to answer that.
We won't collect any other money. We get, we get paid $150 per member per month. Now, that Fred off the street comes in and needs a generic, a specialty drug or something that we don't have in our formulary, our pharmacists are going to find manufacturer coupons, uh, there, there's patients' assistance programs. We're just going to work on their behalf to help them get the best cost. We will not, we don't get in between in the economics. We don't make money on anything else. We will just help them as our patients.
And you'll have to send them to the drugstore or whatever with-
Wherever we have to, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Something to think about adding to your business.
I'm sorry. I keep thinking of things. My concern is that we don't outgrow this, this plan. And then I heard you say, "Well, we're going to open up another one if we do." What's that going to do to our people who are already in business here in Putnam County?
There, it's a, it's a very fair question and there's, there's two realities. Number one, most primary care physicians are already booked to the, to the, they're overbooked. You can't get in. So if, if you say, "I'm looking for my yearly checkup," it takes an average of 26 days to get into a physician's office now because they cannot handle any more patients. So the vast majority of the time, we are expanding the total healthcare capacity of the community. The other thing is that some folks who work connected to larger health systems, th- these are just facts, I'm stating, I'm not trying to be dramatic, but primary care physicians have the highest suicide rate of any professional services. They have to bring their computers home to work for two-plus hours to do all the insurance paperwork after work. I, I started this company in the healthcare dystopia of the United States, which is Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. There are two healthcare providers, they're Highmark and UPMC, and they own 90% of all the physicians in that community. Last year, I had more physicians than I had offices because they were leaving the system so fast because they were going to leave medicine completely, but then we gave them a chance to practice medicine without the encumbrance of insurance and getting out of their way and let them care for people while they got into healthcare. So every single community we've gone into, we not have only expanded the healthcare capacity of the community, but we've also done something for those healthcare providers who've been treated like junk in the existing healthcare system. Sorry for being forward.
Now, I don't mean to do this, but devil's advocate portion, right, is what, how do you handle, you've had to have had it happen where you hire a doctor who's in, here we're, we're at risk a little bit. So you have one clinic, one doctor. Whatever that doctor sucks, I mean, straight up is just, has terrible bedside manner, just whatever, and it's just a bad situation. How, how do you remedy that on, on a scalable situation when you already have people seeing it? And everyone's not going to think, there's going to be people that are, think they're the greatest person in the world too. How do you, how are you measuring your caregivers, I guess is the best way to put it? How are you getting that feedback that's independent and people don't feel at risk? Because remember, now you only have one doctor you're seeing. So it's a little, it's a little more risky as an individual who's only seeing this one doctor unless they decide to leave and you want to keep, we want to keep them all, anyone that could participate, we want to keep them. It's a little more risky to criticize someone that's your only caregiver.
Yeah.
That's a fair question.
It's a great question. You all are extraordinarily astute at this. So a couple of pieces. So I'm going to kind of take them in, in a reverse order. First of all, how do we measure? We measure by asking your folks who choose to join, "How are you cared for?" Through an anonymous survey. That's how we get our net promoter scores. After you come in, you're going to get an anonymous survey and say, "From zero to 10, how likely would you be to recommend this to your family, your friends or whatnot?" We are more than double the net promoter score of the existing healthcare system. So your folks will tell us how we're doing. There's also the standard clinical measures, of course. Are we controlling type 2 diabetes and all that? But honestly, that's the clinical stuff that physicians already know how to do. Do they know how to deliver an exceptional care experience? So let me, and start your question there. The first thing we do when we look to hire physicians is look for those folks. Not with the right education, they all pretty much have the right education, but which are the ones that love connecting with people, spending potentially an hour, maybe two with folks? It takes a unique provider who loves that human connection. That's how we hire our physicians. Now, the reality is, is that person may leave, that's right, and that there is a risk. We have a chief medical officer and actually extra physicians, and in the absolute worst-case scenario in which a physician just left completely, what we didn't have noticed and did not know, our chief medical officer will actually come in and step in temporarily, make sure that care is continued while we backfill that position. It has not happened, but we have to be prepared for a situation in case that does happen.
Good, you want to play devil's advocate a couple more times?
So I, I'm a little confused about expanding the healthcare capacity. If you only have however many providers, let's say 500 providers in Putnam County, and now you're pulling from them for your clinic, then how have you expanded the capacity?
Yeah, so, um, the, 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 uh, there's two things that happen when we hire physicians. Some folks are existing primary care physicians and they choose to come on over. There's also i- if, there's also folks who will come from adjacent areas to start practicing medicine.
Okay, okay. So that's really the answer. So there, there may be people in Gainesville or other, when you say the area, you're talking about more than just this county.
Specific geography.
Okay, that answers that question. Thank you.
I'm not bringing people from Pennsylvania, is what I want to commit to you all, yeah.
I got you what you're saying. Okay, okay. Because I mean, in all fairness, the, the hospital has had a challenge in getting, in getting people here, and it's just not in getting providers here, and it's just not because people don't want to come to Putnam County, but there's a lot of factors in that. And one of them is housing and one of them is education. Uh, those are two big factors that stop some providers from coming into this community and you're going to face those same challenges. That's my point to you.
Appreciate it.
But I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Not to defend you, but you did make a note of saying something earlier that kinda answers that a little bit, too. And I know of four individuals who are PhDs in Putnam County who don't participate, because they hate the system. So that's also another target audience that is potentially where they could hire from, that are physically here in the community, who choose not to participate, because they don't wanna deal with paperwork. And that's, that's a fact. Those people exist, and they, they exist here. There's one within three.
Okay, I'm going to first ask, does any other members of the insurance committee have anything to add at this point? And then I'm going to, even though I had asked for a public comment on earlier, earlier in the meeting, I'm gonna, at the request of Commissioner Wilkinson, I'm gonna ask for, is there anybody in attendance today that would like to, to offer public comment, further public comment at this time? Please come forward. You wanna go first, Wayne, or do you want me to have Doc go first? Okay? Okay.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Should I stand here?
Yes, please, if you wouldn't, give us your name and address for the record. I know you're famous, but...
Nice serial number also. Isn't, I'm Dr. John Melanick. I know many people here. I live locally here, and we own and operate five clinics and a medical transport company. I would respectfully ask, before we make a voter decision, to delay it by one month to give us an opportunity to make a proposal. I've submitted a written proposal earlier. I've worked with the management team for about a year. And my vision, I think, was a little disconnected with what we have today. It was a much smaller proposal. It was for five hundred people, everyone, and just exclusively for your employees, for seventy-five dollars a month and a limited, a limited package. Didn't have physical therapy or dieticians. I didn't think it was a big driver to your costs, but included urgent care, primary care, labs tests, office tests, medicines, as well as discounted imaging, half price on MRIs.
Doc, I know you like to walk, but we're recording.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry. So with, with this package in mind, I know, and nothing disparaging, I love your model and a very good backstory. If I have a chance, read the backstory, it's wonderful. I'm very familiar with these models. They work well, and make people very satisfied with them. But I know I can save money over them for about four different reasons. One is, it's a corporation, they're profit-minded, which I understand, nothing against that. But they always take fifteen to twenty percent off for their corporate office in Orlando or Pennsylvania. We don't do that. Everything I've started since 2007, wanting it profitable, I put into a different clinic, and a different clinic, and a different clinic here in Putnam. It keeps advancing the, the status that we have. So now we have two primary care, urgent care, imaging, hyperbaric wound care, and an ambulance company, all for Putnam. We're approaching about fifty thousand patient contacts a year. So it's been really growing very well. So second, we don't, we don't have fifteen percent profit, we don't have to, I don't worry about that. That's not what I'm interested in. Second is, so these patients already, a lot of them already are. So the expenses for supplies and everything else, it wouldn't be an additional expense to me. I'm just diverting some supplies from one office to a different office. This office will be just for Putnam County employees and their families. I think their families are very important, because as a workforce health, if it gets to everyone, if your kids are sick, you're gonna stay home, you're gonna miss work, right? Keep your workforce productive. So I don't have to worry about the supply cost. Third is, if you're gonna take staff and practitioners from the community, the easiest way to do that is pay them more, right? So you can have higher staff costs. If I use the staff I have, I don't have to have higher-priced staff. I can save money on my end, which saves money on your end. And there's one more, one more reason. Oh, and the imaging center. So we already have an imaging center which has MRI, CT, ultrasound, and mammogram. So in, in your model, you, your third-party source out the imaging. So if they have to make money, and imaging has to make money, I don't need that double debt. So again, there's a slice there that could save the county money. So I know right off the bat, I can match this service for service for at least a fifteen percent savings, at, at least, at least, if not more. I don't have to recruit them outside. Right now, we have sixty employees. All of our clinics are here in Putnam. Our payroll is three-point-five million dollars a year, and we pay, last year we paid about sixty thousand dollars in property tax and tangible tax to Putnam County. So we, we would love to offer this service, either in partnership or as, as administering this service, we know we can do it. So we know Putnam. One distinction we have is knowing the data here, knowing the people here, and the biggest items if you look at the data are engagement, we've talked about this, how to engage people and how to change their behavior. And we have a proven track record in that. So there's a fee-for-service model we talked about. You come in, you get paid, identify a problem, you see your doctor, he treats it. You may take the treatment, may not. You pay the doctor, and you go on your life. So that's changing now. They have accountable care organizations, which we've joined. So they give us a, a group of lives, five hundred lives. They being the accountable care organization, ACO, right? And they get a fixed P, fixed fee per person per year, like they, fixed fee per person per month. And they tell us, see these patients as often as you want, every day if you want to, but keep them well, keep them out of the hospital, keep them having surgery, keep them from, keep them from having surgeries, heart attacks, anything disastrous, right? So we're getting paid for what we're preventing. End of the year, they share the savings with us, right? Share the savings. And it's an ample, it's a very, very rich reward what we do. They, they reward us very well for avoiding the traumatic, expensive things, right? Keep medicines, keep people off expensive medicines, keep them out of expensive procedures. They have our own network of providers that, oh, this surgeon may do the, the surgeon a little cheaper, but look, it takes them four more weeks to get them back to work. So don't use that surgeon. Use the surgeon, it's a little more expensive, but only requires one month of PT, not twelve months of PT. So the overall picture saves money with referral ways also, kind of like the network they were talking about, the direct contact. Because we already have that network, we already know the good referral sources. We already know that in the Medicare, at least the Medicare population, we have increased people's visits and saved more money. And ACO shares their savings with us. So a lot of these companies, I don't know about yours, again, nothing disparaging, is they talk about how they save money. It is actually saving money off the increase in your costs. So next year, you expect ten percent increase, we're gonna increase five percent. So it's kind of, it's kind of fake money. It's pretend money, right? You're still a five percent increase. Our goal is to give you savings, and we know we've done that before with Medicare. Sick patients, increase their visit rate, kept them healthier, engage them on the way that they live. So engagement being an issue, things we already do, we already do. People will go, you know, you can offer free flu shots, they may come, a drive-through, they may come. We will go to your work site and give your, and you give your employees those flu shots. We'll get them to their spouses and to their family member, if you like. Because if you're a single mom with a sick child, guess what? You're staying home with your sick child. If you're a two-person, two-parent household, and your child's sick, and both spouses employed, you're gonna flip a coin. Who's got more sick time? I gotta stay home with the kid. You're not gonna have a productive workforce. So also with a workers' comp, I will make, personally make trips out to Georgia Pacific at night, see workers after hours, keep their, their costs down. So I know from workers' comp point of view, we were able to put a physical therapist at Georgia Pacific, and I was being told it's a two-hundred, two-point-five percent return investment, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty percent return investment for every hundred thousand dollars they spend on a PT to take care of their employees. It's a three-hundred-and-fifty thousand they save in workers' comp costs and lost time. They, because I'm their medical director and see their patients and see their workers, and also run their team, they set up a ten-to-one return investment. That if somebody needs to be seen at night, I see them. They need to go to the hospital, I'll go to the hospital with them. If you see them in the clinic, bring them to the clinic, we'll take care of it there, and just saving workers' comp that way. It's much quicker back to work, much less lost time, and much more direct patient care. So I would just respect that. That was much longer than I wanted it to be. I apologize, because I respect that. After one month, just to wait to put together a presentation that would match the services you have. Your management team already has a proposal. It's much more limited, which may be a good start also. If you're towing the water before taking the big bite, we can talk about that also.
We've already, we've already committed to the forty percent with these folks. So waiting another month isn't gonna do anything except extend the timeline, because we've already committed to the forty percent timeline. And I think they've, Doctor, I think they've been talking to you for a while now about this, and I realize you have clinics already set up or whatever, but your clinics are pretty busy, too. I mean, you go in there right now, there's a...
Actually, we see sixteen.
I don't mean disparaging to you either, like you don't mean to him, but it's not unusual to wait an hour, hour and a half, even more sometimes, to get into one of your clinics right now.
At urgent care, I agree. At our, at our primary care, my nurse practitioner sees twelve a day, and my, my NBC, twelve, sixteen. So we actually, we see some, some more time with patients than just that. So our average is, is actually a little less than sixteen a day.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood, we've already committed to the program at the forty percent level. We've already committed to it. It's just a matter, did we wanna jumpstart it a little, to try to make it happen a little faster? But I don't see this commission backing out of the commitment that we've already made to them up previous to now.
I'm sorry to hear that. I've been working with your managing staff for about a year or so, and written, submitted written proposals. I didn't get a chance to present for the insurance committee. I apologize. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Wayne? Excuse me, Mr. Julie McLean?
Wayne McLeanback Automotive. We've asked Benji to set up a meeting with the principals of our company to go over some of the presentations he did today. We are at the point that we find it interesting to see. We struggle like the county struggles with healthcare cost. And we do, Commissioner Harvey, have just a handful of people, as you put it, that really drives our cost up. So I think that not only within county, but there. But I did have a couple of questions, if I may, just very quickly go through there. So having served on the hos- local hospital board here for eighteen years, and I know some people in this room have served on the hospital board, we have struggled, as Commissioner Wilkinson said, to find qualified doctors to come in this community. And I'd just be interested to know what kind of recruitment techniques will go on to find qualified doctors here for, for this venture. Number one is my, one of my main questions. And the second question is, what is the ratio of, of the patients will be seen by physician assistants or nurse practitioners as compared to an MD?
Would you mind answering those questions for us this morning? I didn't mean to put you on the spot when we brought you in today, but I'd appreciate if you'd help us out.
Happy to. This is my life's work and my passion, and sir, thank, thank you for your comments. We're all in the same community, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing in the community. Sir, for your questions, maybe I'd like to address you. So first of all, in terms of recruiting, so my organization was started in Altoona, Pennsylvania, which is a small town in central Pennsylvania. It is actually very similar to Putnam County in that it is, it was not a big town. It's not Pittsburgh, it's not, it's not Philadelphia. So there was a lot of skepticism whether we can actually attract folks to come into Altoona, Pennsylvania, from the surrounding regions and have folks come over. So very early in our, in our company history, and you can see my co-founder here, Dr. Gates, he's a primary care physician and a clinical pharmacist. So our existing physicians and our founders and our chief medical officer are the ones who meet with the physicians. And the reason why they will come to work in this model is because of the lifestyle. The lifestyle in which they are able to practice healthcare, but then step away from that and have time for their family in the community, because they're not subject to the fee-for-service system, which is just grinding them a day in and day out. We also, also pay a wage that is comparable, if not better, to the current healthcare system. So there is a financial benefit from them, but really, it's the lifestyle benefit of why these folks come into this care model. Because physicians, why they get into healthcare is because of their compassion, their, their care, and they want to spend time with people and help guide them and, and prevent suffering. And this model is the model that unlocks that opportunity for folks to do that. In terms of your second question, the ratios of who's gonna see who, the reason why we build out our care model the way we do is because we want our primary care physicians to be able to spend the most time possible with the folks who have the most complex healthcare challenges. So if a individual comes in that's younger and healthier and has a sore throat, the nurse practitioner can probably take care of them and diagnose them with strep throat. But if you have an individual with hypertension, type-two diabetes, and chronic heart disease, they are gonna get a lot of the primary care physician's time. So we allow our physicians to kind of make those decisions, but in general, that's how we figure out, really based on complexity versus colds and the flu and more, less complex diseases, if that helps. Great question. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'd like to add, if I can. Wayne, that was one of our primary concerns when we saw the clinic in Osceola, was Osceola County is different than Putnam County, and are we going to have success? And if we don't have success in bringing in the right providers, we have a problem. And, and being from this county and frankly, more involved in the medical community of late, I realize the challenges that are there. But two things, we, well, one thing, we all walked away from Osceola. When we walked through, we all looked at each other. When we got out of it, and we said, they were happy. Like the providers, the doctors. I don't know the last time I've walked in and gotten service from a doctor who was like happy. The whole staff was happy. So I frankly called a friend who I went to school with, born and raised in Putnam County, pediatric physician's assistant, and said, okay, I don't believe it. She recently took a sabbatical from her practice, and I said, this is what the model is. What does that mean to you? And she said, that's a dream job. And she said, I wouldn't have left my practice or my patients if that was the scenario by which we were operating at that time. So I truly think that recruitment of the provider is easy. We're, we're locked into what we know to be true of the medical providers that we're, you know, been involved with, and they're not recruiting people to bill insurance. They're not recruiting people to see X patients a day, no matter what the conditions are, or to make sure we frankly capture X number of tests or additional exams or additional consults so that they then make back the money that their quota needs. I mean, that's where the medical facility is, or medical care is. No, no fault of our actual providers, and that, that's just where the insurance game has gotten us. And this is a workaround it. So what we saw in person and what we have, what I have talked to in actual testimony of someone who is in that same boat, all aligns with what we have been told and seen by the clinics that they are operating today.
Did you have something come up? If you could give your name and address for the record, please, sir.
George Kostoulis, forty-five Florida Park Drive in Palm Coast. I'm the CEO of Express Medical, and, and I understand this decision has been made. And you're just now looking at the timeline of when to move it forward. But I did wanna answer a question that was made, how it's going to affect the providers. This is absolutely gonna crush some of the providers. As you mentioned, the pie of medical has shifted, especially towards the humana. Almost every provider now is selling out to island doctors or becoming a humana. That means that our patient lives, especially our Medicare lives, are going towards humana. That leaves everyone else in the community to share a pie. What was mentioned, the capacity, yes, you're right, our urgent cares are busy. There's a long wait. Our family practices are not. Most doctors here see about twelve patients a day. Now, as I hear, yes, this clinic's gonna start at a thousand, and then it's gonna grow to three thousand, and you know, more. Actually, I spoke to Benji not too long ago, maybe about a year ago, about our interest in doing the same thing with small businesses. And actually, in December of last year, we spoke to our attorney to start exactly the same process of forming a legal corporation. So about the fourth quarter of this year, our plans were to open an employee clinic for the small businesses in our community. Now, pulling away means that providers are gonna suffer. There's not going to be enough. We're barely keeping open at twelve. We don't, we're not profitable in our family practices. The only way we are, with Dr. Melanick said, those incentives, we're doing such a good job in making our patients healthy, Medicare's giving us bonuses. Now, that being said, other providers don't have the same Medicare base as us. So there will be providers that are really going to be hurt over this whole process. It's been done, but if there's ever an opportunity to bid it to a local company, we're talking about one-point-eight million dollars being sent out of the community. That's huge. It's not long ago that this community was suffering, that Mr. Bates stood up and said, if we don't help the community, who is? And so he made one Putnam. And what I see is a divergence of that, of sending money now without even giving a chance to a local company to create some...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. That's just not accurate statement whatsoever. We've been talking to them and you and your company for well over two years now. That's just three years. That's not an accurate statement you just made.
I'm sorry.
We, there's nobody in this room that's more enthused about training local than this person you're talking to. That is not an accurate statement. Just telling you.
I, I'm sorry. I take that back. And I, I did not mean to impose, to impute any wrong motive on the committee. Because what I've seen, this committee does really care.
I can say something with this. I think everybody that's been at the, the insurance meetings when we started this, is what does this do to our local... meetings when we started this is what does this do to our local providers?
Yes, sir.
And our businesses, because we were all concerned, because pretty much all of us are self-employed, except Paul. He just happens and he, you know, he's a member of the community. We don't want us to hurt anybody. We want us to help the community.
And Commissioner, I'm going to reiterate the, the premise here. This is not intended to take healthcare from someone who is well-established with a primary and well-managing their care. This is intended for the stopgap for those who can't find primary care locally or in the regional area, or who don't have the ability, the access to it. This is not intended to take any primary care patient who may be well-established with Dr. Melanick or any other local provider in our community. We will not on day one, day ten, or day one thousand, tell them they cannot keep their local provider. In fact, we're happy for them to keep because those people are well-established and well on top of their healthcare.
Thank you. I have nothing else to say. And again, I apologize. I did not mean to, to put any motive on the commissioners, as I know that your hearts are with the county.
Yes, sir.
I don't feel like we're giving all the information. I, I was aware that he was working with the county for some years, but I wasn't aware that there was actually any traction. So, um, I'm disappointed that we didn't work more with the local provider. We, he came and talked to us a couple times. Um...
Commissioner, wait, wait a minute. We have worked for three years. Would you please go through what we've tried to do, Julianne?
Yes, sir, and Commissioner.
But we didn't work in the public eye. We didn't have a meeting like this. We didn't listen to them present what they were doing to the public. And, and I'm not even, I'm going to say, I still don't even support going to them. So just, you know, I just am disappointed that we didn't have more interaction and them coming and getting this type of opportunity to present their case and for the public. So that's, that's what I'm saying. And I stand by that. So there's nothing anyone's going to say in this room that's going to make me not stand by that. So there's no reason to continue that. Let me finish. My concern with what they said was they were driving down activity based on Medicare. And basically, that's, that's government driving, asking you to drive down participation. And the way that that usually works and looks is government's asking you to make it so that people don't require as many services. And it's not always in the best interest of their health. It's in the best interest of the insurance. And that's part of what we're trying to drive away from, I think, here. And at least that's my goal in saying we're going to do this, is we're trying to get away from the insurance company influencing overbearingly, and us being self-insured, in this case, on what the people decide. So I do agree. I don't think we gave you enough attention. I know I personally didn't, but I really just thought it wasn't off the ground, so to speak, and it just was a showstopper. So, um, and I don't care what you say is true or not. It's not, my point is, they weren't given the same opportunity as an out-of-town vendor. That's all I'm saying. That simple. We didn't have this forum. We did not have a public forum where business leaders came and talked, and we didn't have that. We, this did not occur for them. So.
We wouldn't have had this public forum today either, except for the fact that we're trying to jump here the system a little further than what we already had.
And I support that. But I'm just telling you, we did not do our due diligence, in my opinion, to get them in front of a group of people to present what their objectives were, or their thoughts. And if that happened, I'm not aware of it. Tell me the date. Tell me the time. When was that meeting recorded?
We did communicate, um, their proposal, as well as other local provider, what they could provide to the insurance committee on numerous, uh, meeting occasions.
I understand. I'm seeing they never had the forum that this other company has. And that's fine. Um, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, you are accurate in one thing, Commissioner. We haven't had one of these meetings before, because we haven't got anything this far along before to have a commission, a meeting like this. Up until this point, it was all conceptual to talk to different people. Well, they took it to another step. Past conceptual, past we've been talking to you, past we're going to set something up in December this year, past all that, they took it past that, to the point to they, where they said, if you'll commit to forty percent of this program, we will come and set this up. They haven't asked us for a dime. They haven't done anything. Everything has gone to date. It ain't like as soon as we passed the seventy-one thousand, whatever it was, dollar, that they came and stuck their hand out. Hasn't happened. I think they're the real deal.
I'm for them, because I believe they can stand it up faster than the other group. So let, let me just put that out there. I have no issue with that. So I, everything you just said is accurate as well.
Okay. So I guess, uh, is there any more, uh, public comment at this point? Okay, I guess, uh, where it goes from here is where do y'all want to go from here? Do you want to, instead of the seventy-something, put up the one fifty and try to kickstart the program that I actually thought was going to be four fifty when we started this meeting? But now it's one, it's seventy-something to one fifty, and they'll kickstart the program? Hopefully, by the time it opens up, we'll find out more about if the school board wants to participate or not, how many local businesses want to participate or not. But at least it'll kickstart the program and it'll move forward on the timeline that was basically presented today. Hopefully, by March, maybe April, we'll have something up and running with boots on the ground. What do y'all want to do?
So would it be the seventy-five plus the one fifty?
No, sir, just one fifty total.
And was it going to be four fifty?
That's what I thought it would be, that, at that, at that level.
Well, that was the, initially, what we had, what we, what had been proposed was just a three-month upfront commitment. And he's saying he would only require a one-month upfront commitment.
Very quickly, that, that's correct. So only one month commitment, and we'll move forward as of today for the, that timeline that we proposed. So that is, that is all correct.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So what happens to our other engagement letter of the forty percent now? I mean, because it's really not on our agenda. So I just, I know we can probably do whatever we want to do and...
We advertised it so that the board could take action, uh, with the insurance committee. Um, that being said, we would amend the forty percent to be the one month at the thousand. We would amend your current, um, obligation. Again, the con, the, the engagement letter's been signed, which would be a simple engagement letter. The legal contract is still under review. So we would simply make the legal contract match what we, our amended engagement.
So nothing really changed from, from the pre, the first engagement to, to today? Based on, only the thing changes price?
No, sir. What, the initial engagement at the forty percent, our agreement on our side was?
Four hundred and fifty thousand?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I take a, can I take a poke at it, please? Originally, we had agreed that, that we would, uh, guarantee forty percent, which was five hundred and twenty people. In today's agreement with the one fifty, we, we're guaranteeing the thousand by the time they open. But they're still going to hunt more people and hunt community members and private partners. And for every one of them they sign up, then we get a credit for it. Even if they sign them up after they open, we get a credit. We don't have to pay that much every single month. But basically, to get it started, we're committing that, uh, for the four, for the hundred and fifty, which I actually thought I was going to have this conversation today trying to get four fifty from you tightwads.
Well, the committal is also, at the forty percent guarantee, nothing broke ground or began until they had a thousand-member guarantee. If we're saying we're the thousand-member guarantee and we're willing to do the one month, they're ready to break ground.
And then we give them till March to go out and hunt the rest? What if they come back with twelve hundred? Do we just pay in our, our participation?
We would, if they come back at twelve hundred and our participation is five hundred, we're only going to pay five.
Let's just say it's only three hundred.
Then we're going to pay three.
We're going to pay three hundred people.
As long as they meet their minimum guarantee.
Okay.
And I'm negotiating for you here at this point.
No, 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 no. I, I don't need, but I, I do need one more clarification, because the last meeting we had, and I remember what we talked about, was the carrot and the stick. And we, we extensively talked about, and, and your comments just a minute ago, and, I fully believe that if you like who you're with, you can stay. I think somebody else said that one time. Y'all didn't get that right? Okay, sorry. Um, if you like your healthcare provider, you can stay with your helper. We've heard that before. But I guess the point was, is we were trying to incentivize people to get into the program to drive the costs down. If we don't get people in the program, yeah, we, we probably have provided a better service. We might break even. We, we enhance it a little bit. But the goal was to incentivize them to get to somebody who could manage their healthcare.
Well, and I think that there's another part to this that is coming, maybe, maybe a multifaceted part to this. But if you'll remember, when we had this carrot and stick conversation, it was pre the survey, when we really weren't sure what appetite was going to be. But it is an overwhelming number that we got back, that there's, there's great request and need. I'm going to tell you, just talking to the staff I run into, they're like, please, I don't have a doctor. I can't find a doctor. Will you, will, is this really going to happen? This will be amazing. So it's one thing when we don't have any appetite in our group for us to say, okay, we need to start on day one heavily incentivizing. It's another thing when we're, all the feedback coming back, and we've, I've asked numerous department heads and other constitutional offices, what's the feel? What are you getting? And everyone unanimously that has come to me has said they are overwhelmingly getting a positive engagement and, and willingness to go. So in the future, might there be incentives like the sheriff's office has created, which is simply, if you show me proof of a wellness exam of any, any provider, whether that you stay with your primary care or you're engaged in the clinic, there's some incentive based into what happens with insurance rates, or, or any other wellness initiative that we come up with as a board. But that, that truly isn't contingent upon this initiative being successful, based on what we're getting back from the group. And, and Matt, Johnny, you guys are welcome to, to speak up, because you're talking to your groups as well.
And you know, that doesn't even count, that if we, we end up making this bridge the gap to workers' comp, you know, especially small workers' comp claims. I mean, I know right now, I'm hearing stories about, um, people, employees that are out on light duty that can't do anything, basically even sit around the office, and they'll tell you theirself they're fine. But the doctor won't release them because they get their wait to six weeks on a specialist or their whatever. That costs money. I don't care if you're the government or if you're in private practice, that costs you money. And so, but that's happening. We got at least one of them, maybe two, maybe two. So just things like that. If we could get them in to see the primary doctor, and they say, I'm fine, doc, go back to work then, young man, or young lady, or whatever, and don't sit around on light duty for six weeks, which is what's happening right now. So if we could bridge that gap, it would also be important to get them back to work. Um...
I think Matt was saying.
Matt, did you have something, brother? Or excuse me, your honor?
Uh, you're, you're good, sir. I was just going to add in that, that I agree, uh, with your comments earlier, and Commissioner Adams' comments earlier, that I think it's, it's time, at least from my position on the insurance committee, that it's time for the county to take some action and, and do something about it. And we're, you know, talking about access to service. For me personally, I know that I'm looking forward to the clinic. Um, I do have concerns, you know, regarding the timing of the savings. It's going to be a lot in the first year. We want to make sure the board is aware that it could be, could be, that doesn't necessarily mean it will be, but it could be a, a, a large, um, amount, um, of additional cost. Uh, but I think in the long term, we, in order to try to get costs under control, the county has to, has to take some action on it. So, um, I, I'm in support of it. But I, again, I think there'll, there'll be some, some driving factors that determine whether it's successful. You know, the, the actual service, whether it's, it's, um, good or not. I think it'll sell itself for the employees. Uh, you know, we can sit around and talk about it. And I've talked with my employees, and I agree with what Julianne was saying. I, I think a lot of them are, are looking forward to it. But it'll really depend on, you know, what does that look like when it comes to fruition? So.
I just, for some reason, I think that the upside potential here so far outweighs the downside, that it's just, to me, it's just not a decision. Um, if you'd like, I'll pass this gavel to the other chairman of the insurance committee, and I'll make the motion. I don't know if I'll get a second.
Well, I, I would certainly make a motion. I just want to make sure that it's, it's the board ultimately is going to have to, I would assume, make the motion. I didn't know that with this being a board meeting of insurance committee.
I would rather it come from a board member, because the reason I set this up, not as a workshop, but as a joint meeting between the commission and the insurance committee, is where we could handle business today as a board. And so, um, you know, I would, I would rather it not just come back to us as another recommendation, because I felt like that we just wasted our time here this afternoon. Y'all want to have another meeting? Have a meeting? I'm not into that. So, you know, I, I would like for a commissioner to either say, I'm sold, I'm not sold, I'm not ready, or let's move forward for an extra eighty grand and we're done. And we're less than eighty grand, seventy-something grand, and we're committed and we can move this thing forward and get it off the ground. I just don't think that there's, with us paying a million dollars a year for health insurance, trying to keep it solvent, we got to do something. And this is the best thing I've seen so far. Is it the absolute answer? Probably not. But if, like I said earlier, if we could break even and give a lot higher quality healthcare, it's worth every dime to me, if we could break even.
Definitely agree with you, sir. Absolutely.
Did we include this in our, I mean, do we have the funds in our budget? Did we, I mean, we...
We just got a three million dollar true-up that went to reserves, that, that's in general fund reserves, and that's not including the six million we already had in general fund reserve. So we got like nine million dollars in unrestricted general fund reserves at this time.
But we also just passed a capital plan this morning, and we did some other things since then. So.
We, we've got some more things to do, but we got plenty of, we got plenty of money, especially when we're, we're going to be using...
I'm going to remember that. Whenever I have some projects, I'm going to remember that.
As long as they're small projects.
Just saying.
As long as it's a new boat ramp at Dunn's Creek. On that property you got for us. I just don't think it's that big a deal. I mean, we're spending a million dollars a year on, out of the true-up monies at the mid-year to try and make healthcare flow. So we're not going to get it fixed by middle of next year, because they're not even going to open the doors until March. I mean, they're, even if they're good at it, they're not miracle workers. But hopefully, by the following year, we'll have things at the level to where we're actually bringing the cost of health insurance down and raising the access to health insurance for the people. That's what they think they can do. So hopefully, they can. So I just, to me, it's just a hundred and fifty grand to try to fix an unsustainable system? Let's say it doesn't work, okay? Well, we're going to put a million in it next year, and we haven't even tried if we don't do something. We got to do something. So if this ain't it, I don't know what it is, but I haven't heard anybody give me a better option. In the last four or five insurance committee meetings that I've been to and what have you, I haven't gotten a better option. So I'd like to move forward today. I really would. But, you know, I, I feel confident I could get a, a insurance committee recommendation to move forward, but that just means we're just kicking the can to the next commission meeting. I, I think a commissioner, if you want to do it, then the commissioners need to make a, a motion to move forward. Or not. Or leave it like it is and see if it ever happens.
Can I make a recommendation, since I'm not officially on your insurance committee, but, but traditionally, decisions come from the insurance committee to the board? Can we take both items up this afternoon? Rich has advised that that's okay, but I think it should first be an insurance committee recommendation, and then at the very, in, at the next motion or in the same meeting, then it would be the five elected officials, because the insurance committee is there to represent the employee.
At this point, I'm going to turn this meeting over to the chairman of the insurance committee meeting, Chairman Davis.
Thank you, Chairman Turner. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we recommend, um, to the board of county commissioners that we move forward with obligating it at, um, for the one hundred percent for one month.
Okay. So we have a motion? Is there a second? Okay. So we got a...
Do we have a list of people that's in this room that's on the committee?
Who's on the committee?
Jay's on the committee, isn't he?
There's five, according to our, five county commissioners, the four constitutionals, and two representatives from the union.
And one member from Public Works, Information Technology-
That's right. You're right.
So you have Mr. Helm, Mr. South.
Why don't you stand up if you're on the committee?
Why is he not on the committee?
Does any of y'all mind not second in this motion? There's three of them right there. There's three of them right there. And Johnny, too. He's on the committee, yeah.
So just, thank y'all.
We got one, two, three, four, five seconds, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay. So we have a proper motion by Mr. Reynolds, and we have a proper second by Mr. Greenwood. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Who was that aye from?
Mr. Adams.
Okay. All right. Good deal. So you're saying you don't want to move forward, Commissioner?
I started the morning off not wanting to move forward, based on what I had read in the packet. I got to the point where I wanted to move forward, and I still don't believe we gave the local, the opportunity that they deserved, and the same type of opportunity. So opportunities are just similar.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
That's why I voted the way that-
We're going to have to agree to disagree on that.
That's absolutely fine.
Because we have reached out to them hard for three years. As a matter of fact, that's where we started this whole process, before we found People One, yeah. And it just couldn't go anywhere. But we tried. So, here's what it is. All right. So what do my commissioners wish to do with that?
I'd like to have some discussion about, and I know, Turner, you might not like it, but I need to have the discussion to get to my decision.
Why would I not like it?
Because you're not going to like what I have to say.
Go ahead.
I understand where Commissioner Adams Act is coming from, because traditionally, when we, I mean, I understand, Julianne, you've had emails back and forth, and all of those kind of discussions, and maybe some things happened before I became a board member. But traditionally, we send stuff out for bid, right? Like, we set up a bid package. We send it out and say, "This is what we're looking for." We didn't do that for this particular instance. And so I can see the concern that maybe, you know, I can see the concern that's being brought up.
And I understand that. There are certain classes of services for which the state and the county acknowledges traditional procurement does not yield the best result to your employees. So that's step one, as far as how we are going about the method of procurement or engagement. We have had onsite meetings at local imaging centers, onsite meetings at the clinics. We have had meetings here with the physicians and executives for which they have proposed different metrics of scenarios by which they could provide some level of medical services. We've engaged in conversations where we would allow utilization of our space and hire our own employee working under their medical license. We've engaged conversations on, we would hire, or they would hire their own employee working under their malpractice insurance, and we would then supplement that. For three years, we have engaged in these conversations, both onsite and here, about numerous different avenues, with the insurance committee and with medical providers. The insurance committee, taking into account all the information, made the recommendation to move People One first forward to the board, and we engaged their services. So we went through the same metric with People One that we went through with every other provider that came to the table at the county that offered some amount of services.
So you're saying that People One's package was more?
Overwhelmingly more. And in full disclosure, it was communicated to the insurance committee each of the packages. So we had another provider that's not here and not been mentioned, but they could only see designated county employees for one hour a day. Well, the insurance committee overwhelmingly said, "We're not going to make the impact in what we're attempting to do with that scenario." So the insurance committee has, over the last three years, looked at a multitude of scenarios. And the only one that the insurance committee thought got to a viable point and took action to engage was People One. And we engaged them, well, the board engaged them. And then the question from the insurance committee back was, "How do we expedite the engagement?"
Right.
And that's where we are today.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad you cleared that up, as I tried to earlier. We're not here today to discuss whether or not, whether or not we have engaged People One, but we've done it. We've already engaged and voted as a board, and we agreed to one month of the 520 bodies or members or whatever it was. So the only, the only thing that we're trying to do today is find out what the board's appetite is, and speed this up to where the timeline actually starts at this point moving forward, and not sometime in the future after the 1,000 members have been secured, I guess would be the two. So for basically 70-something thousand a year, which I thought was going to be 450,000 today, for 150,000 today minus the 70 that we've already committed, we can move this forward right now, instead of waiting for months on end.
I understand. But at the end of the day, 1.8 is 1.8. Is that not true?
That's correct. It could be that, yes. 1,000 people at 1.8, that's correct. We're already on the line for 986, I think.
You're right.
Somebody's going to have to do something, unless you just want me not to do nothing. We'll cancel and go on.
Without a contract, we're not really on the line for anything. So I think that's a little bit of a misnomer.
We have committed.
We have signed the letter of engagement that went-
No, no, I understand. And when does that, the letter of engagement expire? I mean, it doesn't last forever.
A year.
Right. So what's at risk? I mean, if the contract comes back and we don't like the contract, are we still vote no? Are we still engaged? How does that work, Rich? If we can't get to a contract that the board votes yes on?
Then you terminate the engagement or the agreement?
Right. So it is possible to terminate that agreement?
Okay. Well, I guess it sounds to me like there's no appetite to try to move this forward any faster than we've already engaged and moved it forward. So-
But you have the ability to make a motion. You handed the gavel over.
Well, I can. I'll hand it to the vice chairman. I'll be happy to make it if he doesn't want to make it. Would you take the gavel, sir, and be the chairman for a few minutes?
Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we, that we engage People One at the, at the full level requested as, at the, at the recommendation of the insurance committee.
That includes the $150,000 deposit?
That's correct, yes.
Got a proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Chairman Davis, is there anything else to come back before your committee today?
That's my thing.
Okay. Is there anything else to come?